Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, we'll start with our COVID update.
Yep, on the numbers, we had eighty-two, so we're up one from last week. And Suffolk County seven-day rolling average on positives is three point zero percent, which is down a little bit from last week's three point two percent. And then I'll let you address that.
Okay, we've been in discussions with Suffolk, Stony Brook Southampton Hospital, and we will be setting up a pod for the booster shots. Scheduled for Tuesday, November seventh?
Ninth.
November ninth, I'm sorry, thank you. We're looking to have six hundred booster shots. The way we're going to set it up is pretty much the way we've done it in the past. We'll have the senior service, our senior services will reach out to the seniors that they feel aren't capable of, or are uncomfortable using the computer skills to register online, so we'll help those with, get those in place. We'll reach out to our EMS people to make sure that they're scheduled, and then after that, we're going to open it up to the public. There is a, there is criteria, and it's self-testing. No proof is required, but there are, you know, some limits. Supposed to be health-related issues, pretty much. They're taking your word for it, that you're qualified for it. It'll be the Pfizer vaccine, there's an outside chance. There might be Moderna available also, but we're still talking about that. Talking with the hospital, you know, the guidelines keep changing, so the Pfizer booster might work for the Moderna, the Moderna might be available on its own. Is still the potential, if need be, that, well, we might be able to give first shots for people that haven't been vaccinated, so things we need to know in advance. Chief, you want to add to that?
No, I, I still think we're in a little bit of a wait-and-see right now, waiting for the hospital to reconnect with us. I would say are most frail and vulnerable. We'll have senior services assist with, and that should be, you know, twenty or less. And then after that, the vaccine will be made public on the town website, and registration will be self-initiated, we won't have to cover, cover that part. The rest of the pod will be run like we've run the other four at the school. The school is working with their staff to limit access to a portion of the building, so the school day can remain open. And I think we'll know a little bit more by the end of the week, and once we have that information, we'll, we'll put it out on all our social platforms.
Yeah, the only other thing is, people do get appointments to bring your vaccination card, and you'll need to bring that, and also, the six-month cutoff date is April twenty-seventh. So if you participated in our second pod last year, you would be eligible for this one. We're just at that six-month point. But if anyone had gotten their vaccine after April twenty-seventh, then you would not be eligible for this pod.
And again, as the chief mentioned, we, we, we got the go-ahead, we got the okay, now we're just finalizing everything, so as soon as we have all the details, it'll be on social media, and you'll be able to register yourself.
And the town website.
Yes.
We'll have a banner in red at the top of the town website when that registration opens up.
Just out of curiosity, since it's a Tuesday, are we having a town board meeting Wednesday, or are we sticking to Tuesday?
Good question.
I suppose.
I don't think we need to be there.
I'd rather we.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean.
The way we've done in the past is the chief, Amber and myself have been there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm usually there all day long.
Move it to Wednesday that week.
Yeah.
Whether that's the tenth. And what we're doing with the school, we discussed it with the school. Dr. Dolger will close that wing of the school, we're not going to close the school. So we'll close the home ec room and the, obviously, the gym, and the the tech room, the wood, the wood shop room, so that area will be closed. Access, the public will have access from there without closing the school down for the day.
The good news is, nationally, I just came from watching television, you know, when I was having my lunch, that in the last five weeks, from mid-September through the, now mid-August, mid-October here, nationally, the numbers are starting to look better. It's not a time to let our guard down, because Thanksgiving and the Christmas holidays are coming up, and that's a chance for COVID to increase, but the numbers are down as much as forty-five percent. The tragic news is that, I remember like, we just, it seemed like yesterday we had six hundred thousand deaths in the United States, well, we hit seven hundred thousand, and now we're at seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. So we're approaching three-quarters of a million people that have died from the virus. And the reason I bring that up too, that in the last thirty hours, a lot of discussion has occurred about Colin Powell and having been double vaccinated, and here he dies from, you know, from complications of COVID. But let's be abundantly clear that A, his age, eighty-four years of age, B, a cancer, fighting cancer, as, blood cancer, as we speak, a very compromised immune system that he has. So you can listen to who you want to listen to, but the fact of the matter is, just because you've been vaccinated or double vaccinated doesn't rule out the fact that you could not get complications from COVID, or perhaps die from it. But those seem to be people with compromised immune systems and people who are elderly, and that's why the booster shot is so very important to get that group of people, their immune systems back up to, to as high a level as possible. And the other statistic that jumped out at me was that you're eleven times more likely to either be hospitalized or die from COVID if you haven't been vaccinated, as opposed to being vaccinated. So whether you want to believe those statistics or not, that's for each and every one of you. And the other thing is to talk to your family doctor about, you know, what they recommend. So I know elderly people, especially elderly women that have gotten J and J, they're encouraging them perhaps to get either Pfizer or Moderna, to switch over because of the blood clotting issues that they, they discovered. So again, I always would urge people to, you know, you have a family doctor, if you do happen to have one, call your family physician and ask. The fact about mixing and matching booster shots seems to be less likely to become an issue here, so that if you had Moderna and you want to get a Pfizer vaccine, that's, that's okay. And I just think that, you know, it's good news nationally where we are. We're in so much better shape than we were last year, twelve months ago, because of the vaccines and people being vaccinated. But we'd still caution people that the wearing of masks, particularly for high-risk people, but for all of us, in tight quarters, especially indoors, as we start to get to the cooler weathers, as we had today, when you start to move indoors, and it's, it's important to, to use any safeguard you can, especially if you're elderly, especially if you have a compromised immune system. So just throw that out there for what it's worth. And by the way, we didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, but I would have to say that, since I brought up Colin Powell's name, a local New Yorker who, you know, can you think of a finer man? And there are very few people I can really think of in the last, you know, in my lifetime that has made the changes that he has. Becoming Joint Chiefs of Staff, first black officer to be able to do that as a four-star general, first one to become Secretary of State, you know, as a black man. He did an awful lot of great things. And, and the wonderful thing about Colin Powell is that he served with both Republican and Democratic leaders. He wasn't a person that played party lines, he was a person that cared about the nation, cared about the country deeply and its people, and, and really served his country with distinction. And I think it's something that we should all be, you know, take a moment of silence, you know, in, at night, when you say your prayers. Thank God for people like Colin Powell that gave so much of his life to this country, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, so we'll keep everybody updated on the pod and how it's developing, and when the registration's going to take place.
Jerry, I don't know if you've mentioned, just one final thought, roughly six hundred booster shots.
I got it, I got it, I was on this morning when I know.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, I don't know if you mentioned, I can't recall now, roughly six hundred booster shots is what we intend on delivering.
Yes, yep. And, and there's the outside chance, he said that they're researching to change over to Moderna, possibility of using the Pfizer as a booster, or actually having the Moderna available. So we'll know more, you know, when we meet with them next week. Okay. Next on the list is transfer of development rights legislation. Bob, I've been asking you to, you know, get this squared away for us for a few reasons. One, obviously, going forward with any purchases we make in the future on preserved land, but also to look at the preserved lands we've bought, and if we can retroact, Fred Veale feels that we can, as long as there's no conditions on the purchases, we can, we can retroactively get those transfer of development, right? Plans in place, so I need to know where we are with that and how soon we can get that.
Pull your mic closer, you, yeah, just pull your mic.
So the town board has the, has the draft of this. At this point, I've gone through it, I went through it with the planning board attorney as well. And it's essentially final form, however, the one thing I would like to do beyond this is, once the town board has taken a look at it and approved a form, you know, approved that this is what we'd like to do, we should send the final version to the Health Department. We should only do that once. So I wanted to make sure that the town board signed off on this before we sent it to them, because they don't want to see multiple drafts. So, you know, at this point, it's just a matter of the town board, you know, looking through it, making any thoughts or suggestions. And we can move forward, at that point, we just set the hearing and move forward, and we can send it to the Health Department for their comments. But it's essentially based, there shouldn't be, you know, that many things we really need to adjust on. Basically, we took the law that Southhold took, which they had taken from Southampton, or East Hampton, rather, so, you know, this is pretty well tried and true at this point.
And the Health Department has to sign off on it?
They don't have to, however, the recommendation was that we send it to them beforehand. In case they have an issue with anything, so we can work that out.
So let's, let's all look at it, make our final notes, and next week, there's no questions, we'll send, okay, if they go to the. Okay?
For some reason, anyone doesn't have a copy, it is on SharePoint.
And also, you weren't here last week as you were in court, but when we had spoken to Fred Veale, Jerry and I had met with him, the, he was talking about there is something before the governor that has the inclusion of being able to go back and pull, as long as it's not specifically excluded in covenants of sale and deeds and things like that. So just, if you could keep an eye on that, to watch, to see if that gets.
I put it in the legislation insofar as stating that, you know, to the, whatever extent it is permissible by law, that should cover us with regard to the Health Department.
Yeah, but just keep an eye and see if that law does get signed.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, then the next one, Bob, same thing, code revisions. We went to do it last week, but you were in court on a different issue, so, you know, where are we with our?
Well, you, we all have the copy of the definitions, and again, those are, we're pretty much at the same point with that that we are with with the transfer of development rights, that I just, you know, it's, it's put together, and we just need whatever comments that anybody from, you know, that anyone on the town board has. And again, that's something, if you, if you no longer have, that the latest version is up on SharePoint.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, we, we went through those sort of in-depth.
Right.
You know, about two weeks ago, so. Unless anybody has.
So we'll do the same thing, we'll give it one more review on SharePoint, and next week we'll do it again.
And the the other one, I usually get through it.
Um, yeah, the only other thing is, I went through my comments from last week with Bob, and he explained a couple of points that I just was questioning, so just to sort of close the loop with everybody else. I, just find my right page here, I was questioning why, like, you need the stickers on vehicles if you're going across the scales, and it determines which rate you're going to be charged, if you're going to be charged contractor rate, or if you're going to be charged a non-licensed rate. But your comment, Bob, was having the stickers on regardless of, you know, which kind of contractor, if they're not going across the scale, because it helps when the building inspectors go to job sites to be able to know that all licensed contractors are on site. Then actually, after I start, after we spoke, a comment that came to mind is subcontractors. If you've got subcontractors working under a GC, do they need to get this?
No, it's in the legislation that they don't.
So then would they have, like, how do they go about getting?
They gotta pay, if they're not licensed on the island, then they have to pay.
Yeah, in that case, that's, the inspector, the building inspector would ask at that point, you know, what, what are you here, and then they'd have to tell them, you know, I'm a subcontractor of X. So long as it can go back to somebody that's got a license.
Okay, but then, doesn't that defeat, like, having this in here, that if they operate a vehicle without a license, then we've got a penalty because they're un-stickered? So I'm just trying to think, how to smoothly, like.
You mean for the landfill part of it?
No, not for the landfill part, I was questioning the penalties, like, any contractor who's supposed to be licensed under this provision, if they didn't have a valid license sticker, they could be punished with a hundred dollar fine.
Yeah, but it says before that, that if you're a sub for a licensed contractor, you don't have to have, you don't have to be licensed.
You'll hear, they give out the remedy section.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, it sort of seems like, I don't know, I it seems muddy to me, and are we really going to enforce this if subcontractors don't have to have? Like, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Like, if we're supposed to be making it easier for the building inspectors, but we're not requiring subs, then I'm a sub.
So maybe we should do any licensed contractor that shows to put the sticker on there. That way it's.
Well, that's, that's the question, is subs don't have to be licensed?
Well, that's up to you guys, if you want, whether, whether you want the subs to be licensed. You've decided not. Do you want to refer it over to them, see what they have to say about it?
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, I feel like this whole section was, like, at first I thought it wasn't making sense to me, but when you brought in the building inspectors, then it started to, but then I started thinking about subs.
So we'll send it to them, whether they think that should be, that they should be licensed or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob, if I can ask you, the definition of resident? Kind of wrestling with it.
On the wrong page.
How it, have you looked through the entire code where it's listed? And the impacts of this definition within each of those subsections? Is that?
Yeah.
How it applies, how it affects?
Yeah, there, there are one or two, really the only one that is substantial is probably the moorings definition.
That's it, boring?
You know, there's, there are a couple with, for example, the beach stickers, but that's already dealt with, because we have a separate resolution with regard to how, you know, that's proved out for Dottie's purposes. So really, the moorings are really the only one where there's a timeframe. Most of the others are, the new definition wouldn't be substantially changing anything.
Okay, all right.
I'm trying to text over, Chris or Reader, Chris will be over in two minutes, so we can go back to that. Bob, so we're waiting for that, we'll go back to, to the next one, the town calendar, Juneteenth. This is a discussion we had, that this is a new federal holiday that we have to put in place for the calendar year 2022. And my, my proposal is for the non, for the non-union employees, the non-bargaining unit employees, that we take away Lincoln's birthday and replace it with Juneteenth. We have President's Birthday, and I quite honestly, I didn't realize until I came back to Town Hall that we still had Lincoln's Birthday, I thought President's Birthday superseded it. So I, I think we can just swap out one for the other, so we have to go to the police and highway unions and negotiate with them.
Yeah, with regard to the unions, it's part of the contract, so that would need to be discussed with them. With regard to non, you know, to standard town policy, it's up to the town board to determine that.
And we need to do that post haste, because we have to have it in place for the New Year.
I mean, you can set that, insofar as the standard town, you could set the hearing on that.
Right.
You know, immediately, the other ones go out into contractual anyway.
Yeah, so for the non-union, it's a fairly simple task. For union, the only thing I would say about the union, if we're negotiating with three or different unions, that we be consistent.
Two unions, just two.
Or just, just two then, okay. So that we be consistent between the two of them, that one doesn't have one set of rules.
Well, we'll try to, because they're not consistent now, they, the highway and police have different, you know.
They have slightly different needs with regard to that as well, because of.
Okay. Okay. So let's set up a meeting with the and, and we would start that on our own before we bring in our outside counsel.
Yeah, let's at least get, get their position on things, and then we can bring Rich in.
Okay. Okay, we'll go back to, Chris, we had a question, Chris Teans here. We had a question on the contractors licenses, that there's a stipulation that if you're a sub, you don't need the license, because the contractor is licensed.
No, if you're, if you're an independent company, you need your own license.
But that's not what it says in there.
Well, it's.
I was just actually looking for that exclusion now.
I saw it in there, too. I mean, if you're an employee, that's one thing, but if you're a separate entity and you're building stuff, you should have a license. That's why we've always gone after that, you know, going about that. But if you want to exclude it, you know, it's.
Yeah, there's for the employees, because that's for wages or salary. No, that's for, if you're a member or partner, owner of the.
It's not in the exceptions.
So an individual who performs labor or services for a home improvement contractor, you're saying isn't a, isn't a.
They're not individual, they're usually.
Yeah, it's an individual, not a.
Right, so I. Mason company that's building machinery, they're totally separate.
So it's.
Okay.
If you're a subcontractor, you have to have a license, not.
Yeah.
If you're working for, okay.
Sure.
Okay, all right, so then I'm okay with the, yeah.
Okay. That was it, I think, is there anything else for Chris?
No, heading to Ram Island.
Thank you.
Now or never.
There you go, thanks. Okay. Okay, the next, Conic Bay Region Community Housing Fund, this was the legislation that the governor signed approving what the Senate and the Assembly had approved two years ago. Now we have to get our ducks in a row, we'll have a meeting with Fred Veale and the East End Supervisor and the mayors next month to go over the procedure. Part of the procedure is, we have to establish an advisory, a housing advisory board. And we have our, we have our affordable housing committee, but there's stricter guidelines to who can be on the advisory board. They want a minimum of seven people, up to fifteen. We have five on our housing community group. They, they're specific, they want a builder, they want a builder, at least one builder, banker. I'm not sure about lawyer, and then they want people that are advocates, you know, to housing. So we need to go over that. I've scheduled a meeting with the, with the housing group for next week from Thursday, so we can start going over, you know, exactly what the legislation says and how we need to move forward with it. The second part is, each town has to adopt a housing plan, and there's some guidelines for what, what's involved in that. So I think we'll be charging the, the housing committee that we have right now with, you know, making recommendations on how we establish the advisory board, and we'll start working on adopting, putting together an actual housing plan to meet the governor's requirements, so we can move forward. The other question, I, I touched on with Fred Veale, and, and we'll talk more about it at length as we go on, is this, the governor's legislation will be on a referendum if we do nothing at all, if the East End does nothing, next November, on Election Day, November 2022. So it wouldn't go into place until January of 2023. My only concern that I mentioned to Fred Veale was that we, we're losing, you know, close to another year's revenue from the, you know, from the transfer tax. Had this been put in place when it was first approved by the state and the Assembly, and vetoed by the governor, the East End, the five East End towns would have collected thirty million dollars toward housing. You know, we, we get the smallest percentage of that, but it's still a percentage, so it's something we have to talk about. The concern is, if you try to do, in other words, if we did a special referendum to have this, you have to be very careful that when we do a general election, generally, people on Shelter Island are very pro this type of legislation. We had the highest positivity rate for the two percent transfer tax. Anything when there's, you know, with the twenty percent of the two percent for the water quality, we had a very high rate of response. So Fred's concern was, if we do a special election, we might not have the general public here to vote for it, that would support it, and if there was a concentrated group that was against it, it could, you know, be detrimental to the vote, so it's something we have to talk about. And is it worth, you know, are we gaining that much if we do a special election? So we'll, we'll talk about all that.
Jerry, question, the two pieces, is that the advisory board and the housing plan itself, did they issue any framework that they definitely want to see?
Yes, well, yeah, the advisory board, they definitely have, you know, who needs to be, you know, representatives of certain groups, and, and the housing plan is kind of wishing, it's there, but it's very, very generic.
Right now, it's all in legislative form, basically, you just have the bill. I would expect that sometime within the next three to four months, they'll probably issue some type of guidance as far as, you know, a model plan or something.
I think we'll have a much better feel after next month, when we meet with the East End Supervisor and the mayors. Okay. Okay, next is board member reports, and I'm going to start. We got a letter dated today from the Shelter Island Association, asking, asking, we asked the town board to immediately stop rezoning initiatives currently underway and revert to best practice, which introduces important zoning changes only after a thoughtful and holistic approach with extensive community input. And I'm, I'm not really sure, you know, where this letter's going, quite honestly. Sometimes I should just bite my tongue and say, okay, but this is exactly what we're doing. We brought up the issue because it was brought to us from the Zoning Board of Appeals, making their recommendations. We have not, they want us to immediately stop rezoning initiatives. We haven't started any rezoning initiatives. We brought it up as a discussion. We said when the comprehensive plan is put back into working order, we will address those issues then. And the other part is, they say revert to best. And the other part is they say revert to best practice, which introduces important zoning changes only after a thoughtful and holistic approach with extensive community input. And that's exactly what we're doing. So I'm really not sure what the intent of this letter was. They're telling us to do what we're doing, basically.
Maybe the only thing I could say is I kind of had the same feeling. But actually, to see clarification. You know, I think having a dialogue with the person, you know, we understand your letter. Do you understand where we're going as a town board? Is it in conflict with what that letter states? And how so? But I would, you know, we got the letter. We acknowledge the letter. We pursue it a little further. Call the people into your office, ask them to explain how what we're doing is contrary to what their direction wants to go in. I think there's a lot more similarity than there are discrepancies. I think there's a lot of rumor out there about things and people's making assumptions that maybe they don't need to make. I would pursue it further and just, you know, meet with people. A representative or two. I don't think you need to obviously meet with the whole group.
Okay. That's it for me. Albert?
Yeah, first thing, this, I assume Amber and Jerry, you saw the septic revision?
Yes.
The latest rendition? I mean, it's basically, there's some concessions were made.
Yes.
But what I'd like to, you know, review it, look at it. And then if we could put it on the agenda for next week, Jerry.
Absolutely.
Substantive talks, really. It's something that's near and dear to my heart. And I think it's kind of a critical time to fish or cut bait.
Yep.
Just while you're on it, just to add on that, you know, we spent the better part of hours individually thinking about this and putting together our thoughts. And I think the fact that Joe, as a town engineer, Albert, who is passionate about this, and I got together, spent some quality time. First of all, we emailed back and forth one another, made some changes, provided some feedback and insight into where we wanted to go with the new number three, you know, which we have on the list here. We've adopted the other things. But I think we came up with something that's interesting. I think it's good. I think it's pretty sound, you know, how we phase it in. And when we phase it in, that's always open for, you know, for something. But I think it covers the loopholes that had been created by people, you know, and I can, we can cite examples all over the island where people didn't put an IA system where you really needed to base on. And I think we covered the three bases pretty well. And so I look forward to, you know, having that discussion next week. Look it over carefully, make some notes, pose some questions that you might have. But I would like to have Joe present also for the meeting next week when we go through it. Because I think the three of us are pretty much in consensus on where we were going with this. And it's, it's good. And I think it's fairly consistent with what's happening in Suffolk County across the board. You know, so it's not something pie in the sky kind of stuff. It's what other towns in Suffolk County, especially here on the East End, are initiated.
Quick question on this with regard to A, B, and C. I'm assuming that's A, B, or C as opposed to A, B, and C?
Correct, yeah, that, yeah. It probably is and/or, it probably is and/or, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I wanted.
Yeah.
Right, it's any one of these, not all three.
Correct, correct.
Yes, we worded properly.
Yeah, I made that note on my sheet.
That's all we'll talk about.
Yeah, and that's good.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
The CPF Committee met Monday morning. The CPF funds, again, are probably this year going to exceed last year's by quite a bit, which is a good thing. The chairman assigned, was assigning property oversight to respective committee members. So they each have so many preserves to keep an eye on. Is any activity, just to watch, report anything amiss. This land is your land at the History Center that is going to be extended through the end of the year. It's originally just the end of October, but they've, it's been so popular that they've extended it to the end of the year. If you haven't been there, please go down. It's really, it's quite a show. QR codes. I've been talking about that for a bit. They have been posted on the preserve signs. So when you go to the preserve, you take your smartphone, punch in, just take a picture of the QR code, and it will bring up the story of the preserve and any trails that are there and outline. Very cool, very neat. That's all I have, Jerry.
Okay. Christine, or maybe I meant to ask you, is there really, when the Planning Board met last week regarding the white property and they finalized it, does the road have to go in before anything's done? I was under the impression the road had to go in if and when something was going to be developed. But after speaking with Gordon, he said that had to go in initially.
The Planning Board, I wanted to have the road go from South Manantic
Right.
into the parking area.
Right.
That the white family had given as a parking area. Suffolk County partnered in this. Suffolk County didn't care about.
Yeah.
We could have parked on the shoulder.
Yeah.
But the Planning Board said that they required now the road to be put in to the parking.
See, I left the meeting thinking it would be put in if someone was going to develop one of the lots. So now it has to be put in, period?
Not the entire road, but just to the parking area.
So that has to be done now before?
That's what the Planning Board decided. It was part of their.
There are two roads. There are two roads. There's an initial road from Manantic to the parking area. And the cost of that is by the town of Shelter Island. The second road is the road from that parking area all the way to lot number two. And that's what the homeowners have to take care of if there's any development. But that does not have to be done now.
Does the town have to pay for a road?
I don't know. That's something I was not aware of, but I haven't seen the final resolution.
All right. Again, the way I saw it, I thought, I guess what Marcus is saying about the second lot is what I assumed was the first lot.
Jerry, Marcus is actually incorrect with that. So the whites are responsible for both roads. The one from Manantic to the parking and the one from, from the parking inland if they decide to do construction. The concern was because the parking is off the street and it's in the preserve area, you need to be able to get emergency vehicles in should someone have some kind of medical emergency. That's why the Planning Board requested that the road from Manantic to the parking area be installed sometime within the next six months.
Okay, all right.
But it's whites responsibility, not the towns.
Right, I had misunderstood. I thought it was if and when the development took place.
Okay, so that must have changed. There was something in the covenant in the old deed that the town or the county would have to take care of that road from Manantic to the parking area.
We have to take care of the parking area and the paths. But the whites are still responsible and the HOA is responsible for the road.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay. Okay, Albert, I was in on yours?
Yes.
Okay, Amber?
Media met this morning, and there's just a couple of things from that. We're looking at the website, you know, once a month and just, you know, determining what kind of changes need to take place. We're going to start looking at the analytics on usage. So the website over the next few months may start to change a little bit just because like one of the things that came up this morning is a lot of people go to our town website to get to the building department page. So we're going to put a link, you know, if the analytics hold up, we're going to look at the whole year's work. If it holds up, then we'll change some of the links and get rid of unused links and put in building department so it makes it easier for the public to use. The other thing that we discussed was since we're converting the town meetings over from Town Hall Streams to YouTube and posting those on our website, do we want to start posting Planning Board and ZBA on the town website, those meetings separately? Just so that way it's easier for the public to go back and watch those.
So are we doing everything on YouTube then?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're transitioning over there. So in other towns, we looked at it, are also putting their planning board and ZBA. They are their own separate independent boards. So why not have those out there so the public can sort of understand?
Because it's not bandwidth issue.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, no storage issue. There's no additional cost. Their meetings are already being recorded because we're doing hybrid meetings. So just wanted to run that all by you before we go ahead and start posting.
So is it just a matter of setting it up on the town website? Get into it?
Yep, yep, and the media department.
Right.
Mary Ellen and Christina will get that worked out.
Okay.
So that's all that I had. Oh, our budget, yeah, the Fire District is having its public hearing on the budget tonight at 6:30 for those who are interested in attending. It's in person at Station One.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, a few things. WMAC met last Wednesday on the 13th. The four applications that we were given, Rosenberg, that was the state mooring police system, was approved. The Dunn mooring permit was approved. That's the form of Robinson at C2551. The White mooring application was approved, and the Vandenbergan mooring application was also approved. We, there was a lot of discussion, obviously, vast majority of that meeting was on the Ramshead dock permit application. I'll read you some of the highlights very quick. I could do that in less than a minute. Upon guidance from the supervisor and town attorney, the WMAC discussed this application as a residential dock. The zoning issue hasn't been addressed. No members recused themselves from the discussion. All seven members of the WMAC participated. The proposal is greatly oversized for a residential dock. It would meet commercial dock requirements, obviously because the commercial docks are much larger residential. The applicant's agent and the applicant maintained that the proposal made the dock safer while reaching sufficient water depth. The WMAC is concerned about the expansion and the use of the business. And they cited several reasons for their concerns, some of which were taken to task by some members of the WMAC. Committee members have various opinions and didn't find a solution that would be supported by its majority. Majority of the members agreed that the protection of Cockles Harbor is a priority. However, the views on how to achieve it differ. And some mention that it is not the role of the WMAC to think about in the protection of the entire harbor. However, the majority of the committee agreed that they would like to see a different proposal and suggested relocating the dock closer to the causeway. So moving it further away from the Bennett Dock closer to the causeway. Once new plans were received by the WMAC, they will continue to have that discussion. I submitted to you three pages of notes. I wasn't at the meeting. I watched the whole thing from start to finish. My comments and questions are in black. The responses in blue are from Al Loretto, and the ones in green are from Bill Garrity. I found some ideas off them and some questions. I will take that to the entire committee and get some of their feedback. But you can read that on your own. They have some pretty good responses in there. There are a lot, lot of questions about, obviously, the need for the size of the dock, whether it should be considered commercial or residential or something in between. And my own mind of having been on this committee now for six years, you know, it's not truly a residential, it may be in a residential area, but resident docks are not going to be used like this dock is going to be used. If you're saying that we're having eight moorings out there and four and a half people for mooring, and you're getting somewhere in the vicinity of 34, 36 people using the dock minimum twice, coming and going, and maybe more throughout the day, and maybe using 50 or 60 people on a dock. I venture to say that there's no residential docks around town. We have 50 or 60 people are using dock each and every day during the highlight, during the height of the season from, you know, May through September. So, you know, safety is always important. The depth that, you know, whether you can limit and get sufficient depth at 100 feet, like most residential docks are, the limit is 100 feet, or whether you have to go out. There's a couple of other docks that they've extended out to 112, 115 to get the two and a half foot depth at low tide to be able to accommodate the traffic, the boats coming in and out. That's another, that's another, you know, thing that has to be discussed. There was even discussion about how about we, you know, go back to the old dock area and just move, you know, put a split rail fence there. Let's get the thing properly marked where the Ram Head property actually does begin. And let's then take the setback and let's locate the dock so that would still would be south and west of the beach area and relatively in the same location. But one of the things that we, that came up constantly in the discussion from the owner and from Jack was the fact that, you know, having the dock where it currently is and having people walk out on Ram Island Drive to go to and from the restaurant in the middle of the night and after people have been drinking and everything else is probably not a great idea. So for safety reasons, you know, I think we have to somewhat, you know, be concerned about that.
I think the interesting thing to that, Jim, is we brought up at that WMAC meeting that the town would be willing to discuss keeping that dock, the existing dock, and using as strictly as a vehicle to get from the moorings, you know, with the launch to the dock, and then go into the Ramshead, which they've told us many times that they've been doing for 40 years. Now they decided that it's too dangerous to do.
Right.
So, you know. We gave them some options.
Yeah. There is no doubt that whatever size dock that we put there, you know, in terms of width and length, I'm more concerned with the width of the dock, you know, because of the amount of people that would be coming and going, you know, up that dock on a constant basis, that it's safe. You know, that it's a safety factor involved here. And that there would be strict guidelines on the use of the dock, you know, what it would be used for. You know, I think the lot of talk about the safety of the launch and bringing people safely from their boats into the dock, I think that's reasonable. I think in terms of having other things and tour boats and things like that, that's what people in the neighborhood are concerned about. That's what people on, most of the people on WMAC are concerned about is a big significant, not even significant, any kind of expansion of the current use of the dock they would be against. I think the town board kind of, you know, understands that and appreciates that line of thinking, that we would, we would want the new dock, wherever it decides to be located, to be closely, as closely resembles what the old dock was all about, with the idea that the launch service would be something that we perhaps could support. So in terms of the configuration, let's not get so hung up on the word residential versus commercial as opposed to safety. And I, and I still think that, you know, well, I strongly recommend it, and I recommend it to the town board, that several of us go out with the town engineer and meet the new owner there, a couple of members from the WMAC, maybe somebody from the Ram Island Association, meet there and look at the different places where this dock would sit. And let's look at the pros and cons. It's either going to be close to the Bennett Dock, you know, with the setbacks. In the middle of that, between the Bennett Dock and the beach, which is kind of centered really on the Ramshead Inn itself, or on the other side where the old dock is, but just in on their property. So there's three possible locations. The biggest thing is the depth of water. So if we're not concerned, you know, the location is predicated on can you get to two and a half feet of water to have, to make use of the dock? So I would venture to say it would be well worth our while. Put everybody out there, let's look at the thing, let's have a decent discussion. I think we can solve this problem in a heartbeat.
Okay. When do they meet again?
When do we meet again as a group? When do we meet again as, as a group? November the first, which is only not a couple of weeks away at six, six o'clock, which is a Monday night. Okay. Veterans Day coming up, obviously, on Thursday, November 11th. It's always celebrated now on the 11th of November. Honoring, and let's focus on this so it, people, Dave wanted me to make sure, Dave Clark, the commander, wanted me to make sure that they announced that we do honor both living and deceased veterans on Veterans Day. Right? That's our target audience is living and deceased veterans as opposed to Memorial Day where we are focusing on primarily on, on deceased veterans, those that were killed in action and those that are past. CAC meeting met last night. As you know, we only have our four members on, currently on the CAC. Did anybody get back to Rich Denning after we interviewed them?
Uh, yes, I spoke to him. I, he is, he does not want to commit to getting on to that committee right now.
Okay, so he's a no-go now. Okay. All right, so we generated, we, we interviewed Sean and Dan also, member for other committees, that we, we might want to ask if, I'll take that initiative and involve them if you want me to. And we also have a third person who, a woman that just happens to be very involved in, in, a key person in town. I won't mention who it is because I don't want to put her on the spot before I ask her if she would like to apply for the committee and come for an interview. But we can't do anything with two people. So we, you know, we, we didn't have a legal meeting last night, but we did meet for over an hour. And I will tell you basically what our, our thrust on the CAC is going to be.
But you have four members, you have two outstanding seats.
Yeah, we, well, it depends whether we go to five or go back to seven. You know, you, you also have, you have John.
Right.
But he's rarely there.
Yeah.
You know, he has a conflict with his schedule. So, you know, that's a problem. And we have one other person who did not show last night. So we, we have those four people. Oh, and we also have Petar Larson. Yeah, so that's, that actually, there's five of them. But we're looking to fill those two other seats.
Right.
But to get seven people. Our primary thrust is, and we talked about the Green Options Fair, by the way, of the CAC getting more involved with green options and, and getting something going next summer for that. A large part of what we would like to do is educational. The good thing about it is Mark Capellino works for the Cornell Extension. He's got a lot of these programs already on tape and they broadcast them, you know, on, on the, and some of that stuff, particularly stuff that is aimed at herbicides and pesticides are the two target areas that we're looking to pinpoint next year. I created and handed out to the committee last night a pretty extensive list of things that the EPA is looking at. The United States EPA continues to use 85 pesticides for outdoor agricultural applications that are banned or in the process of being banned elsewhere, including 72 in the, in the, in Europe, 17 in Brazil and 11 in, in China. The United States has banned only four pesticides, still approved for use in those other countries. We are far lagging behind when it comes to, you know, taking a look. We have definitive information about these pesticides and herbicides, but it's a question of money. As most of you know, Roundup has probably gotten the biggest talk. Our Ace Hardware has stopped selling Roundup months ago. It no longer carries the product. I passed out, Roundup has been linked to certain specific types of cancers. I don't want to go through all that because it's, it would take a northern amount of time. But one of the things that prompted Roundup to do what they did is they were brought to court and, and they were sued. So Roundup is, this is an historic victory. There were 30,000 legal claims from customers against Roundup. The company that makes Roundup is Bayer. Bayer's decision to end U.S. residential sale of Roundup is historic victory for public health and the environment. It's time for the EPA to act and to ban this substance altogether. So, you know, one of the things we might want to look at is some of our recommendations back to the town board will be looking at specific types of herbicides and pesticides that we would like to, you know, ban from being used here on Shelter Island. The other thing is about application. Having them licensed, weather conditions to, to apply it, how close to waterways. Those kinds of considerations need to be taken care of. And that's something that the CAC is going to get involved with. The last part of it is the educational piece. If you've got weeds in your driveway, I put out a thing here to the committee, whether it's going to tolerate more weeds in your driveway or you're going to, you know, there, there are, there are different alternatives. Herbicidal soaps, which are very friendly to the environment, you can use to get rid of them. Herbicidal vinegars, citrus and clover oil. So these are lots of things that can be used to, and let me tell you, I would say if you really did an investigation, there are hundreds and hundreds of people on this island that spray their driveway for weeds, hundreds. A lot of them use dangerous products like Roundup to take care of weeds in the driveway. Nobody likes to get down on all fours and weed, I did it for, you know, 12 years until I changed my driveway. Now I don't have that problem anymore. The permeable stone, so it, it worked, saved a lot of hours and you don't have to, you don't have to hand weed anymore. But I think just educating people about, people just see it as a little spray, but when you're putting literally, and I have the quote in here, hundreds of thousands of tons of Roundup. It ran into millions of pounds of Roundup in the ground. We're, we're asking for, for problems. So that's just something that we have to be a little bit more cognizant of and pay a little bit more attention to if we're going to ever clear up this problem. Okay, that takes care of that one. Beach Access met this morning. They have identified 13 areas on the island that have been working with Bob, our town attorney, to, and Bob commented on about half of them, you know, this morning. There are Daniel Lloyd Road, Rocky Point Road, South Silver Beach, Montclair Avenue East, South Midway Road, Taylor's Island Access, Cheekwood Avenue, Second Causeway North, Second Causeway South. And I think those are the 13 areas we looked at. And we did talk about the ramps. The fire district initially has paid for the, the construction of those ramps to be able to get fire trucks down to the water for the fight fire. But the town now maintains, maintains those ramps. And Joe's understanding, as Joe explained to them this morning, that within the marine assets, we are actually have ramps as part of the, as part of our capital planning. There was a lot of discussion at Second Bridge about signs, who has access to it, who doesn't have access to it. Peter Veilbig said, you know, he, he would like, you know, somewhat friendly kind of public access. There are, one, the large owner down there is Sylvester Manor. And then there are four other owners that are, that are down there. He talked about gentle use. The problem is sometimes parking and litter that's left behind, which kind of takes the owners at Second Bridge and kind of annoys them a little bit. So again, that's an area that we need to look at. So that, that was pretty much it. I think they're doing a great job, you know, trying to get some, because a lot of times we, these are areas that, you know, the Taylor Island Access thing, that's still another controversial point that we need to, you know, kind of work out and, and make sure that the town board has a proper understanding of that. So I could give you a copy of that report.
And Jim, before you leave that one.
Yeah.
Curious, do we, do we know how many, how many parking permits were issued at town landings or shore access points, whatever the committee calls them now? Do we, how do we get that information?
The only specific numbers that we have would be for, I think it's Shell Beach or, or precedent waves and then everything else, I think, if you loop into one.
Okay, can I get that number? Where do I get that number?
I don't think Peter Veilbig, because I know he set it up and had access to it or just.
You don't do that.
Yeah, I was going to say you just saw the monies coming in.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I was wondering if the town board had that detail or whether they just saw the money coming in. So Peter Veilbig had access to the program.
Okay. Christina, can you speak to that a little?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Bob also, Bob also made a request from the committee for Bo or Peter and two task force members to go visit some of those sites to get a little bit better sense and appreciation on them before he makes any kind of judgments. I will tell you, we have a total of 69 shoreline access points. If you count the 16 additional ones that we talked about, it equals 85. But, but we really will have a report on all 69 sites. The last thing that came up that we might want to look at as a town board, by the way, are some ground rules for on-fires on Hay Beach. Apparently, there was a fairly large fire that was down on, somewhere in Hay Beach, you know, in Menhaden. I think it was in that Menhaden area. And it was a large fire and then the people went home and left the fire going. And I guess neighbors saw the fire still ripping and it was kind of windy and they called 911 and they went over South Old and they said, well, just keep an eye on it, it'll burn itself out. Meanwhile, a boat said, I'll look into that for you because that's not the response that we were really looking for. And in the future, rather than dial 911, dial 0600, the 631-749-0600, and we'll send one of our, our police officers over there to make sure that we secure the area. But again, I looked through the town code trying to find something that stipulated the size of the fire and, and, you know, what, what you're allowed to do and how, how many feet away from vegetation other towns have them. It's a simple little thing to do, but they seem to be becoming more popular. As Bob said to me, do we want to, do we want to discourage that? No, we just want to make sure that people have some type of guidelines. Bob also mentioned the fact that we've talked about it before, even with Beach Access, about having fire pits on designated spots, like one at the end of Shell Beach on it, at the tip where there was no vegetation out on the thing. Maybe at certain, a couple of spots on Wade's Beach, designated spots where you can go if you wanted to sit around, especially this time of the year at night. It's kind of a nice thing to watch a sunset go down, stay there after dark. But again, you can't leave a fire unattended. You can't just walk away. You can't build one, you know, in this particular location of that close to grassy areas or vegetated areas. So I think it's something what we need to just put it on the radar. I think it's a simple little thing that we can come up with.
I think there are also some, and I'll check with the fire marshal. There might be some parts of that that are part of New York State Fire Code.
Well, we're going to have to discuss this fairly at length because on fires now seem to be the end thing at Crescent Beach and Wade's Beach.
Sure.
And, and they're nice and the families go and enjoy themselves, but I can't tell you how many times in the morning the highway departments come up saying, you know, we need to address this.
Yeah, we do.
Ember's still burning or it's just barely covered with sand and we go to sweep the beach and it's going to damage the equipment or they're throwing all their garbage into the fire. So we're going to have to address it.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether we put rings in certain areas, how we.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's just, it's time, you know. We were lucky, it was a fairly wet, you know, end of July and August. So, but on a dry summer, it wouldn't take much to have a major fire down, you know, in that area with all the vegetation that's down there, Menhaden open and side there. And it's also, it's also an area that if you go back in there on that little road, you're 10 feet from vegetation.
Yeah.
And there are beer cans and beer bottles all over the place. So it's just an area that, that's not a place where you start a fire, have a fire. I know it's very private, very secluded, can't be seen, but it's an area that, again, homeowners looking out the window and they see that fire burning down in that area, they say, what's going on here?
It's a county park.
Yeah, it is a county park, yeah. So it has to be addressed. Last but not least, Seagrass Workshop. Elizabeth Hoynstein is actually leaving the iconic estuary partnership. She's leaving effective October 27th. She is, her new position is with New York's, New York Sea Grant and Long Island Sound Study. And she'll continue to work on climate sustainability and resiliency planning. But we did meet, we're a group of 13, I represent Shelter Island, but every Fisher's Islands there, Sag Harbor, New York State DEC, EPA, the TNC is there. Stony Brook University has a representative there and the PEP, Joyce Novak is there as well. There's 13 of us that sit on this committee. The purpose of it is to understand what seagrass work is, work is occurring in the Long Island's three estuaries, including the iconic estuary. And then to determine the next steps that we're going to take in terms of seagrass management protection. I will tell you, the future meetings, we're going to be meeting twice a year. We're going to consider getting local representatives involved. For me, that would be getting some of our, our shell fishermen involved. Considering including other seagrass managers and practitioners in the region as appropriate, such as Stony Brook and other research places, and form smaller subgroups to move forward with specific tasks. We'll coordinate the meeting with appropriate DEC folks to discuss if testing plants with, with seeds from further, what they're trying to do is they're looking at eelgrass and seagrasses that are from North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Florida. Since our waters are now becoming warmer, can some of those seagrasses that can sustain greater temperatures during the summer survive now in the iconic estuary? So that's what some of the research is going on there. They're taking some of those plugs and trying them out because one of the things you cannot control, I should dump a lot of ice in it, is the temperature inside the iconic estuary during the summer. So when temperatures get up to the mid 80s, you know that it's far, it's 10 degrees north of where it has to be for eelgrass. Eelgrass only survives up until, you know, 75 degrees Fahrenheit. And once you get up into the low 80s, mid 80s, you're cooking seagrass. It, it's just not going to survive. So this particular, you know, what, they're looking not only at shellfish, they're looking at the habitat and how to reseed properly. And it's a lot of trial and error, to be honest with you. But it's a committee that will be meeting twice a year. I'll keep you posted, that's it.
Bob, you have anything for us?
The only question I have is on the Ramshead Inn Dock and Mooring. Do you want those on the agenda to discuss on Friday or do we leave them off until?
Moorings, yeah, I was going to say moorings can be left off. Those eight mooring ones can be left off because we still haven't redefined resident.
Right.
Once we adopt that.
But the dock goes on.
Well, the dock will just recess in here.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I don't.
Just leave it for.
Yeah.
They haven't, they haven't.
Yeah.
No.
No recommendation.
There's no recommendation.
Okay, what else do we have for Friday? I know we have those four dock applications. We're going to do a couple of things Brian put out for us.
Yes.
Authorizing.
Yep.
Okay.
And we got Lou Sap from MSW's office workers and Brian's MSW. I'm going to start the fuel oil and cocaine bids and parking permit fees to be returned. And just full receipt of taxes posted, WQI. So I should actually leave off the dock and the.
More, yeah, I, I don't, I think we're premature on them.
But we have to reconvene the vehicles, the home improvement contractor license hearing. Do you want that?
You got to ask Jerry.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The home improvement contractor license, you want to reconvene that meeting? Okay.
Yes.
Then we have community development funds. And J.B.'s wetland, state mooring fully.
Okay, and then we have.
Tax override.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then the other one, Dottie, is.
Rose Amelia.
That's for the application, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those are good.
Then we, we're going to have to make the resolution to transfer funds to pay for the dogs.
Right.
And we're going to have to, a resolution to approve the Phase Two Environmental Study at 12 South Ferry Road.
RFP, to go out to RFP? Like when you say approve. Like, when you say approve?
Well, they did, they did Phase One, so we have to...
So we have to go out for RFP?
They're, no, the same.
Expanding the scope.
Yeah, we're just expanding the scope of, to Phase Two from Phase One.
What was there?
Yeah, exactly.
I just don't understand what we're doing exactly.
Dottie mentioned...
That's right.
Okay. Dottie mentioned Davie's Wetlands permit. Jim, did we get a report from the CAC on that?
Uh, yeah, we got, we got both of them, right? We, yeah, we got our report on them.
That's right, you don't have to dig it out now, just that we have.
Let me just, let me just say.
And is there any other wetlands applications?
I might have one or two to set.
I'm sorry?
I might have one to set over here. I might have one to set the hearing for.
Oh, I got you, okay.
When did you get those CAC thing?
Oh, that's the, on Davie's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that, I just...
I'll resurrect the, these are my handwritten copies of it, but the, you know, again, I have a lot of paper here, I'll find it for you.
As long as you can give the report.
Yeah, I can give the report, okay.
Yeah, right.
And I'll, and I'll share that.
You know, we don't, you know, Ed always did the reports pretty much himself, but now we don't have a committee, a committee.
I asked them about that last night, and they didn't feel that it was necessary, but I'll be honest with you.
Their wetlands reports.
It took me an hour and a half to redo those minutes myself and add all those comments that needed to be added on. So I, I mean, I virtually wrote those minutes like I do for the, almost for the brands committee, you know. I mean, it's a lot of work.
I would say also to remind you that the, in a number of ways, and for that exact reason, the clerk is not so much for the committee's use, for the committee's convenience as it is for the town boards. So if you guys think that you need someone there to do that, I would certainly say that's...
Jane.
Also, Jerry, I've got a few extra additional things for Friday.
Yep.
One is the institution of the Juneteenth holiday. The Taylor's Island lease extension.
I can get you a copy of that lease.
And the Norris WQIAB, there needs to be a amendment.
A change on that, I'll do that.
And then I also have a thing that from the East End Drug Court, we have to annually reauthorize that, and I have a resolution they sent for that.
What was Juneteenth, Taylor's Island lease, what was the third one?
Norris WQIAB.
And then what was the last one you said?
The East End Drug Court.
So just get together with Dottie.
Oh, yeah, he does.
One other thing, Jerry, just to remind you, I know you guys have a lot of code to go over, but don't forget you also have the Article sixteen to review.
Yeah.
That's pretty much in the same spot, just for the town board to go through and make comments.
Okay. Well, let's try to get all that done.
Yeah, that was the one that's like administration, elected officers.
Okay. Amber Rose, any questions? Okay, anybody in the audience, any questions? Last chance, any questions, anybody? Okay, I make a motion, we go, I'll go into executive session and discuss contract?
Yes.
Okay, contract, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.